Oh, yes. Sure.
It's definitely not. It should have been the same.
Oh, I see. It's possible.
It's listed.
Has to change. When I produced this, yes. It's all written. But I asked about that.
Yes, sir. Wait. I'm honest. I know. And I'm. I don't know.
I don't know. He's laying it.
Right. What are you talking about?
I just want to say, yes. Sorry, pardon. Tell us that. I have something.
Yeah.
We're down. I got it.
Tell me.
Well. That they had what's in the package?
It's listed.
It has to change. When I produced this, yes. It's all written.
But I'm good.
But I asked about that. So I think it's better, but the number, yeah, the numbers can change up.
What?
Just one thing.
I'm the one who's the only one.
I wish you had to buy this.
Well, I did, but, you know.
I wish you'd talk.
But that was.
You need to keep it on.
Got it. I'm actually also running. It's like.
Listen.
Yeah.
He makes money. And it's. Yeah.
I had this. This is. You get it.
I can't like say.
I didn't.
Now they're. And then what's happening?
Yes, it isn't. I mean, what about?
I don't know.
But this is missing.
He doesn't say. It's abandoned.
Oh, no.
It's very.
It's like. So that was my daughter.
I can't. It's on her. I'm kidding. I didn't. It's hurt.
Yeah.
When I checked, well, I haven't showed up. You know. I was not.
Oh, no. It's like. She was.
But. So, yeah. She got.
Actually.
And I love you.
I mean. I love myself.
And I have. Her.
You.
I'm here. Get some. I'm. I'm. Then.
Right, right, right.
I'm okay.
I understand.
So when that's. That's exactly. You're going to check this. I'm not.
Well, we can talk about it. We're trying to raise it, but.
The number.
And it says that this is it does not. It's.
It's. It's. It's. It's.
I did.
This rocky.
You know.
She. I'm.
No.
I'm saying.
But not to. But not to exceed 600. Off-site. Yes. So you could have. Enough. But. Maybe I'm what I'm saying. However, your own. You could have. 600. Except in theory, you could have a full capacity.
You're allowing.
Oh, my God.
But I just I just took. Now, we've got a fault, but I'd be set 600 off-site.
If you're allowing. Or you should get back the money.
Again, we're not. We're not talking about people staying.
Yeah.
Your students. Absolutely.
So it doesn't point it to be the math that you put in.
That's what we're. Yeah. But this is a problem.
Not.
We're not used to.
Yeah.
I said. I, uh. I said I've done it. So. You would. What? Yeah.
I believe.
Yeah. Yes. Two. One. This time.
So basically. Were. I mean. I was. I would have. Affect. The. People. Would. Yeah. I know it just level off.
Yeah.
So that's fine. Yeah, so that's so.
Right.
Yeah. Now they have. In on same. West. Now we say. It's.
Yeah. I bet you. It will catch you in his life, really, like. It was for giving.
I'm not. The difference is you're allowed now.
Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good evening. We're going to call this meeting to order. Do you please stand? Pledge of allegiance and moment of silence, please.
Like the legends. The massive state of America. We do the republic through the springs. When my nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Is law.
We have a forum, planning commission meeting tonight. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Welcome everyone to this joint meeting of the planning commission and board supervisors. Tonight, the PC and the boss can both be in session at the same time. After the PC has made his recommendations to the board and finished his business, it will adjourn. The boss will be in session and they will make the kind of determination on issues to stick around or run off. We will take comments from the audience. If you desire to comment, please state your name and address. Also, please limit your comments to three minutes or less, as usual. And address your comments directly to the planning commission and the board of supervisors. At this time, you're going to suspend our meeting and defer to the board of supervisors.
Thank you, Mike. Um. We do have a forum like called the board supervisor portion of this meeting to order. Um, we do have an agenda in front of us that has been amended. We have, uh. C and D, which is status of presentation project. E, which is projected use of Corona relief fund monies. Um, and then a closed session on status of the mass spending rescue squad negotiation. Who else have anything we need to add to this agenda? Uh, and we're going to continue this meeting till two o'clock on the 11. Nothing further. Mr. Chairman, I do not approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Or just made second, further discussion. And on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Um, back to you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Uh, I'd like to get a motion to approve the amendments from our July 1, 2020 meeting.
Don't move.
Second.
Any comments, amendments, whatever? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Uh. First case on the agenda tonight. There's a floodplain ordinance. It's case number zero eight, zero eight, two five dash one nine. Amending the zoning ordinance floodplain management regulations, Article 11. County ordinance specifically changing to Article one through. Uh. Seven Madison County is a participant in the national floodplain insurance program. NFIP administered by the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR. With oversight from the federal energy management agency FEMA. Through the NFIP federally backed flood insurance is available to homeowners, renters and business owners. Has protection against flood loss. A requirement for the county to participate in the program. Is adoption of appropriate ordinances and regulations related to floodplain management. In addition, FEMA has recently completed a remapping of the floodplain limits in the county. Floodplain floodplain study, FIS, and floodplain insurance map, FIRM. Uh, has been completed and if and when proposed ordinance amendments are adopted. The FIS and FIRM will become effective upon adoption. Paper copies of this proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. The FIS and the FIRMS are available for review. These documents may be reviewed digitally. Mr. Ligon, do you have anything to add? Mr. Webb, I'm sorry.
Uh. Hello. I'd like to thank everybody coming out to discuss the floodplain ordinance tonight. Um. And. Um. So. On the floodplain ordinance, again, as Mr. Moscow said, this is a requirement. Uh, there are three elements of the floodplain ordinance. Uh, it's ordinance itself, which in. In Madison County is is codified on the zoning ordinance, and that's why we're the planning commission is sharing it. There's a flood insurance study. And it's a flood insurance rate map. Uh, the old maps in Madison, uh, these were produced, I believe, in 2007. And the updated maps, which would be dated September 18th, 2020. Are the result of the recent flood insurance study. All of these have been uploaded to our website for anyone that, uh, you know, had interest in would look at the flood insurance study. Generally speaking, as I said in the work session we had a few weeks ago. The 2007 map compared to the 2020 map is is an expansion. Uh, I did have someone who called the other day. Uh, the office just wanted to know if it had expanded on his property or not. And actually, it had contracted somewhat. So even though overall it's expanded, it's expanded, it doesn't particularly mean every property has seen an expanded map. Uh, in in Madison County, there are roughly 40 policies for the national flood insurance program. And just to keep in perspective, with about 6,100 dwellings, not all of them are single family, some are multifamily. So 6,100 housing units totally in the count. So see, it affects a small number, but those people who are affected, this is very important. Sort of being in compliance with FEMA and all the things we're supposed to, we would need to adopt this ordinance amendment and remap. Any questions for me?
Any questions for the planning question, Mr. Webb?
I have a couple, Mike. How many acres got added to the floodplain? Do you know?
Yeah, I I really don't know. I would say if I had to guess, if you looked at, you know, I kind of tried to look at a tutorial in the packet. Uh, I would say probably this expanded by maybe 10% and 15% total. So that's just kind of looking roughly at the overlays, the two maps and how the new map is a is a little larger. Now, just to be clear. You can build and identify flood flood zone. But floodplain, building potential ID, it can tell you everything you can do. Uh, there are just certain measures that you have to take in order to build in the floodplain. So it doesn't permit, it doesn't prohibit you from, you just have to elevate. You know, it's accessory structure, you have to sometimes put fence so floodwater can get through. So again, it doesn't, it doesn't prevent you from this, so it's built in the floodplain.
Hard to get insurance, right?
Uh, well, it's not really hard to get insurance, but it the rates is up as, you know. My experience were kind of volatile and they tend to go up. So. My experience in real estate, usually. People try to avoid building new floodplains. For all possible, especially single-family dwelling.
Well, if someone has a house and they have a mortgage on it, most likely, and it. This puts their house in the floodplain. Then the mortgage company is probably going to force them to get flood insurance.
Exactly. Right. And I I don't, I don't know of anyone that was not in the floodplain that now is. I mean, it's possible that the new map is going to not want dwelling. I mean, if I was a landowner, that would probably be the worst case scenario is I didn't need flood insurance and now it's expanded. And I do, I don't know if that that's really happened, but I guess it is possible.
Any more questions?
I guess I got one more concern. This will ultimately probably change the tax base somewhat.
Yeah. Um, I talked to Brian Daniel about that today, and we both agreed, and you know, with with. Uh, flood property, it's possible that if. Your map expanded, now your house is in it and it wasn't. You could probably go to an equalization hearing and make a pretty good case that your property value is lower. Will that equal, you know, a lot of lost revenue or changed revenue? I I really don't think it's it's probably so many screwballs. Hard to identify in the budget or in the tax collection. So it's possible, but I don't think it's a big concern.
Anybody else? Any comments from the audience? The floodplain ordinance? If not. Can I get a motion from the, um?
Mike? I have the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just by. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to recommend to the board of supervisors for approval. Case number zero eight dash zero eight dash two zero dash one five. To the board of supervisors for approval. I get a second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That's why. That is your net. That's unanimous. I have to make one check here. Uh, Hey Otz was going to attend the meeting virtually. Uh, Hey, are you out there? Boots, I'm sorry, boots. Hey? Okay. We do not have a, we are missing one member, it sounds like. All right, moving on. Back to the board.
Um. Board of supervisors. Excuse me.
I'm. I'm sorry.
Please. Um, call the board of supervisors back to order. Um, case number oh eight dash oh eight dash twenty dash fifteen, amending the zoning ordinance is floodplain management regulation. Article 11 specifically changing to Article one through Article seven. Madison County is a participant in the national floodplain insurance program administered by Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. With oversight from the federal emergency management agency. Through NFIP federally backed flood insurance is available to homeowners, renters and businesses, business owners. As protection against flood loss. A requirement for the county to participate in the program is adoption of appropriate ordinance and regulation related to floodplain management. In addition, FEMA has recently completed a remapping of the floodplain limit in the county. The flood insurance study and flood insurance rate map have been completed. And if or when the proposed ordinance amendments are adopted. The FIS and FIRM will become effective on adoption. Paper copies of the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, the FIS and the FIRM are available for review. These documents may also be viewed digitally. Ligon, anything to add?
No, sir.
Mr. Wilms. Um. Anything to add? I've got a lot of experience with flooding. So.
No, I don't think so. It's just, um, this is a formality mostly. We already have a flood ordinance. We do have new maps expanding the floodplains somewhat, but. The advantage is if we have this program, which are guaranteed, everybody's guaranteed flood insurance, no matter what. So FEMA will give it to us once we have a compliant ordinance and flood map.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, either Mr. Webb or Mr. Wilms? All right, the public hearing is open. Are there any public comments on this adoption of the floodplain management regulations? All right. Back to the board.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have the case oh eight dash oh eight dash two zero dash one five.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, further discussion. Hearing done. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Back to you, Mr. Moscow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I will recuse myself of this next case, not vote and leave. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I will excuse myself due to a potential conflict of interest I may have on this project. Um, I worked on it about nine months ago, a potential general contractor. So I will not participate. And I will leave.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that those who have accused themselves identify who they are from the record. So. Michael Fisher.
Daniel Griffin.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next case on the agenda is case number SU dash zero seven dash two zero dash one four. A special use permit requested by Crystalis LLC, Marka Boller. For an event venue. Uh, used located on seven parcels totaling 749 acres. The subject property is zone eight one. In this district, event venues are allowable by special use permit. The applicant has submitted a conceptual site plan showing a build out of numerous, uh. Lodging areas, a welcome center, a restaurant, a spa, a pavilion, an event center, and several other associated buildings slash structures. The project narrative testament, site build out will be, will contain roughly 60,000 square feet of permanent and temporary structures. In addition, uh, developed areas will include parking, roadways, hiking trails, equestrian trails and facilities. If approved prior to the development of any area. Uh, or structures, the applicant would be required to submit a site plan for their view by the county staff. Received the recommendation of the planning commission and approved by the board of supervisors. Uh. An existing, uh, single-family dwelling on a parcel, one of the parcels, 73A, has a postal address of two, four, two, seven, South Blue Ridge, Turnpike, Rochelle, Virginia. County has received numerous letters from citizens concerning this special use permit. Uh. The planning commission has read, and I'm sure the board of supervisors have read all the comments. These documents will be read into the record by Mr. Hobbs and Mr. Greg for efficiency purposes. If you desire to address the PC or this body, we ask that you not repeat, but it's already been read into the record. We're just asking that, not saying you can't. Okay. Uh. It's also, it is my understanding that we have a memorandum agreement dated July 31st, 2020. Developed by Mr. Webb, Mr. Greg, and the applicant setting out specific conditions for the special use permit. Mr. Uh, Mr. Wilms will address this memorandum. But first, I think, uh, uh, we should have the citizens' comments read. So that we will have a better understanding how the conditions addressed. Uh. And raised, uh, by the citizens will be, uh, so that we know we will have all of those top trump. At this time, I would like to call on Mr. Brad and Mr. Hobbs. I guess it will take a little time, so be patient. I think it's over 100 pages. Sorry. Little change here. Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Would you please stand up and explain what this case is all about?
Okay, uh, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming out and participating tonight. Uh. The SUPD by Crystalis LLC. Uh. First, generally speaking, you know, given the current situation of the pandemic, I know it's a bit odd that a hearing and event in use. However, I truly hope in the future our life will return to normal and also regional tourism will thrive. Again, this is a hope, a confidence that will happen. Uh. I'd like to thank everyone for attending and their interest in the SUP application in Madison County in general, regardless of where you may live. Um, for the last 10 weeks, I have worked extensively evaluating, analyzing the proposal. Because I think everyone here believes the proposal of this size deserves a transparent, but it's a hope it's been thoughtful and deliberate to process. Uh, in over the past few weeks, I've had numerous emails, phone conversations with the applicants, specifically Barbara and Susan Miller. Uh, of course, members of the planning commission, members of the board of supervisors, and I know I've gotten to know a lot of people in the public at large regarding this this project. Uh, in my opinion, all the comments and concerns will and have will and have improved the SUP if it is approved. So I do want to thank everyone for for your help and and most important, I think, your patience and understanding that this has been kind of an evolution. Um. On the on the project's history, uh. You know, the the ACT tourism sort of, uh. I guess popularity is something that I think. 10 years ago, if only people were doing events in barns and weddings, I I don't think I really would have quite understood. But you know, recently, a few years ago, the state obviously created sort of favorable environmental, excuse me, favorable legislation, which basically. Uh, kind of helped tourism, entrepreneurship in rural areas. Involved hard to build the breweries and wineries and other activities. Uh. The one criticism is that, you know, with these changes, especially with breweries and wineries and some of the uses. Uh, the legislation essentially has sort of taken some of the 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 powers that generally have been reserved for localities. Uh, and put some some sort of in the by right use, people would call it land rights, call it civilization, you'd call it whatnot, but. There are sort of more uses that are available for agricultural properties that may be used that we would have consumed somewhat more than commercial then. And we, you know, there would have been a lot more input from the public, special use permits. So that's sort of the environment, I think, has sort of led to maybe, uh, maybe the evolution of this project, I can't say for sure. Uh, now, historically, we do know the property as the Kentwood Farm, and I have learned, I've been on the property and I've toured it. And, you know, and understand its its significance, as you know, in Rochelle area, obviously, it's it's a beautiful property. Uh, now regarding the specific ordinance, uh, a little over a year ago, 2019. The the county adopted the rural resort ordinance. Uh, it's just the code. Now, I was not here at the time. I think that was the spring of 2019. But essentially, uh, I think Ms. Miller was involved in this process, as many people here, and I'm sure people in this audience remember. This amendment simply provided an avenue. This amendment simply provided an avenue for Ms. Miller to apply for the special use permit that we are here today. Further, in, in the winter of 2020, the county did amend the rural resort ordinance. Several small changes, uh, the most notable, it's not a major change, but we did, I don't remember the total reason why at this point, but we did change rural resort to the event venue ordinance, but substantially, it's, it's basically, uh, the same ordinance. So, uh, understanding when I started, you know, a little over a year ago, you know, it was kind of common knowledge and I knew at some point, this application for, uh, the Kentwall, for the Kentwall Farm would, would sort of be on my desk at some point. Uh, in May of 2020, obviously, the county received the S U P application. The application is a mix of lodging and then indoor space and traditional, what we would call sort of, uh, you know, ag tourism sort of, uh, uses. My initial concerns, and I, and I, and I did express this to Ms. Miller, is that in May, you know, given the the state of public hearings and assemblies at the time, my initial concern is, quite honestly, I would probably would have preferred to have sort of a, a pre-meeting, maybe a month or two before, before receiving the application. So to a certain degree, it kind of put, at least analysis that I like to do, it put me a little bit, you know, sort of behind schedule, given that the joint hearing process that we institute here, which I, I do like, uh, in, in Madison County was, you know, once I got the application, we literally had six weeks before it would go before a joint hearing. So overall, uh, I do believe in, you know, sort of my, uh, my talking to the folks on the planning commission, on the board of supervisors, that the overall position toward the potential S U P is favorable. It does not mean or suggest that it, it, the special instrument will not be scrutinized. Uh, you know, there are several points of concern, and I know that I've, you know, written about this in, in my report and I have, you know, discussed this. Uh, you know, traffic obviously is, is a large issue. You know, I was on the phone with E Doc today, uh, Mr. Moore. The current traffic count on this segment of 231 is, is in the packet. It's 1,400 annually daily, daily trips. We see a peak of 145. So the one hour of the day where you have the most traffic is 145. Now, that's what, you know, maybe less than a little over two cars a minute, uh, that, that by all means, according to Mr. Moore, that is, you know, is, is a a low, a low end of, of, sort of the surrounding road network. That segment definitely is on the low end of usage. Uh, I did, uh, find out the other day, in the last five years, accidents marched on the Orange County line, two beautiful run roads, about a five mile stretch. We've had five accidents on that stretch in the last five years. So again, that was the Mr. Brian, Brian Gordon. And the assessment, I think, that I've gotten from emergency services, and the folks talking about this project, uh, is that, sure, you put more cars on the road, you have more events, you are ultimately potentially seeing more accidents, but, and, and this is also my conversation today with Mr. Moore. It by no means, this area seems to have some sort of, uh, you know, structural defect that, hey, what needs to change with this segment of road? You know, it is believed that, you know, accident wise, it's, it's well below, uh, what, you know, you would, you would expect. So those concerns are minimal. It does not mean, again, I won't go into too much detail, that there aren't concerns with some of the traffic surges and things of that nature. There have been some, uh, some concerns with the environmental side, and I've gotten that question a lot. You know, some folks have asked whether it should be kind of an overall environmental impact. At, at this point in this, you know, in the stage, uh, an overall environmental impact, uh, I know clearly, uh, this application will, will run through the building zoning office. Nothing, no dirt will be turned. That doesn't mean that, that meets the threshold for what we need permits. But basically, any dirt that's turned, any building is built, uh, is going to have to have a reviewed site plan. Uh, we have erosion sediment controls that would have to be part of the site, you know, part of the building construction plans. There's stormwater plans. We have building permits. Uh, when it comes to, you know, septic and water, soil scientist has to perca site. It has to have a D V H approved system based on the, based on the soil scientist's recommendation for the site. This all happens to the machine department of health. You know, I, I know I've used Graves as a, as sort of an example. I think it's a good example. I'm pretty sure that Graves operates on septic, I mean, excuse me, septic systems, so it is something that's possible, environmentally safe, but it is, it is a process, uh, that requires a, you know, a lot of review, design. It, it's quite frankly very expensive. So I guess when, when it comes to the environmental side, I, I just want the public to understand that this is much scrutinized, going forward, if, if it were to approve and eventually develop. Uh, another sort of, uh, issue that has come up is the transferability. So generally speaking, my experience with special use permits is that they do run with the land unless there's some compelling reason or the, the nature of the business would mean it should not. To me, uh, on its face, if you're comfortable with the conditions, uh, then to me, the actual owner, people have different opinion, uh, to a certain degree. I don't want to say it's, it's not important, but, uh, they're going to have to follow and inherit any conditions that are placed on this project. As a matter of fact, I kind of went the extra step, and, and I think that we should even record them into the public records as I recommend. That way, if we change, we're all gone. Basically, these conditions become attached to the title of the property. And I think that's good for the public to know that it's, it's not just the document that we have to keep up looking for. It's a public, durable document that is in the, the records. Now, as far as the actual conditions, and I, I did, uh, you know, I, I know I did say the other day, on Friday, you know, we, we reviewed, I, I, my email, the mini you probably have read, what Friday was the last revision. I did, based on some comments, make some revisions that I will pass out. Al, if you might help me on that. And, you know, we'll get to the conditions portion in your packets or the current conditions, and here is, Al's just going to kind of pass that, and we'll get to those. My, my belief in the conditions and I, I want to, everyone I've talked to in the public has been very, uh, I believe, understanding. We've used the website, constantly post, update the conditions, and it's been a fluid process. I, I have been very adamant that I wanted to, you know, a computer code to get a thing called open source where programmers come in, put their input, and they kind of build a code. I have built the same way about this document. I've worked with the applicant. What, what works for you? I have taken, I've taken advice from Mr. Hogg of the Environmental Council. I've had, uh, Ms. Hammond, I believe, I mean, Mr. Kitch, I'm sorry, I said the wrong name. Uh, Mr. Radford has offered comments. I have picked comments. And anyone who has a, what I feel is a, and there are a lot of good, you know, there have been a lot of good, um, suggestions. I, I've not been afraid to change this, alter it, to make it better. If you look at where we were when we started, uh, at the end of May, compared to the document we have now, I think we have a much, I think we have a better, more specific document. So I'm happy and I'm thankful and not, in any way or shape, I admit that I, I look to the public, I look to the planning commission, the board, the applicants, anyone that wants to put their, put their fingerprint on this, I'm happy to, uh, to listen and make changes. So that's why the document has kind of changed, uh, throughout the course of this, this six weeks. So I thank everybody for understanding. I'm happy to believe. We have discussed the early to impose conditions, uh, and I, I understand there's, you know, there's a balance we want to sort of strive as a municipality that want folks to have a successful business and to feel like, uh, they sort of had, uh, the freedom to use their land and if it's appropriate, but this is a special use permit. This is not a by right use. Property rights come with also the ability for local government to regulate. So if you look at my, my, my latest rendition, which is very similar to the one that you have in your package, but if you look at the red, I will just go over a few things, uh, and just note some changes. To me, you know, when, not to repeat, but when it comes to the layout of the site, what is being built, where it's being built. This document is clear that they'll have to follow what's in this event site plan. There, there's just no question. The process for site plan approval. I know some people that say, why do we get noticed five days for the site plan? The, we're going to follow the state code when it comes to site plans. Again, if approved, the advertising for site plans will follow the state code. Many communities do not, uh, when it comes to site plan development, do not require, do not require that, um, it be a public hearing. It's a little unusual, actually. The public will have many opportunities potentially to review and comment, uh, and to basically monitor the progress of this project. So on what I, what I have given you in red, and it has the red mark, and if anybody wants to follow along, and on these conditions, one, one change I made is on the control and document, and this was a suggestion from, everybody have one?
No.
So, again, substantially, but like the last one, but. Al's a local builder, so. Very nice of him to volunteer that. Thank you. So on the controlling document, I, I simply added, in, in red, I mean, this document controls the S U P. At, at the end, at the red at the end, as a suggestion, I think, that's open for the public make, I thought it doesn't hurt one bit. The submitted materials to the Mass, Mass County RS follows. Sal's LLC's application for special, for submit, for sure special use con, permit, concept, and master plan. They have a submission on May 15th and it was revised on July 24th. The revision on July 24th just simply shows where the potential staff, um, lodging is, so I, I think that was pretty much the only change. If you go through the other document, everything else, I believe, you know, these are all, all the same. Uh, if you look, if you go to page four of it, I put in, you see, this for clarification, and remember the board pointed this out, again, didn't put anything, put in, eight or season colleges, uh, to exceed 2,000 square feet per unit, or potentially replaced by eight landing sites. So we're not going to do both. It's either one or the other, uh, potentially replaced by. And that will be up to the applicant colleges for landing sites. And that would be four of eight. Five of eight, we're all the same. Now, six of eight. This is really, to me, uh, this is the principal concern that everyone has. And I, I, again, I want to, Barbara and Susan have been absolutely on the ball to talk to, to communicate with, go back and forth, to, to give take, to bring them suggestions, I'm pulling all these different ideas, but that's not to say that there's not some issues that sometimes we have deadlocked. And again, trying to find that balance. So on private events, if you just look at the red, I just added on that second line, as the name suggests, attendees again, that be onsite overnight or offsite, non-overnight guests, assembled for common purpose celebration. When, when we look at private events, um, we're basically saying here that building, you know, you can have a building occupancy, uh, you know, there's certain sort of, there's certain things govern how many people can be on a site. I mean, we are talking about a separate employee on a, your site. We're not putting in restrictions on the use of private events. If a winery or brewery had private events, I would say we don't, we don't put restrictions on that either. So in my opinion, I think this is a, uh, this is appropriate, but I also think it's generous. In the sense that you're doing a private event, it gets private, so you go on your site, you're staying on your site, that's fine. It gets a little tricky when you start, and I did borrow this language from another municipality. You know, when you're trying to start delineating what's minor, what's major, you start putting numbers out. My really belief on the minor events is that they really truly will need money. I did have a conversation today with someone at Graves Mountain, and I want to say that, you know, I, I use it as a resource, though maybe the applicants don't see themselves as Graves Mountain. I, I do think it's a, that's a great comparison. You know, I was told, I asked, you know, they have an occupancy at Graves that's always identical, looking at 250 guests or night. And, and my question was, well, you're not doing a major event, you know, there's different festivals, bluegrass, but you know you're going to get thousands of people. When you're just having a, a regular fall weekend and you get full occupancy, what would be the total number of offsite guests that maybe come to dine, that, you know, just come to be there, or maybe, maybe have a little entertainment that evening? And, and, and I was told that really, they hadn't really thought it that way because, you know, they don't sit there and count the guests, but their feeling was for non-major events, if, if 250 people came from offsite, that would probably be a pretty large crowd, 250. So you have 500 in total. You know, again, I know that this business model is different, and you can tell us that, but my feeling was, when you put a thousand as the, as the upper limit, I have a little bit of a, a hard time saying, you've got a thousand people, uh, and this is a minor event. It just, for some reason, so I, I, I thought, and again, just to backtrack, I, I do believe that these minor events here are going to be similar to, you know, a lot of the minor events that happen in suburbs, wineries, different places in, in the communities. I don't see a minor event being something that, okay, in theory, I guess it could have, you know, several hundred people, but I, I just don't see it as something that's really getting thousands of people. Of course, this would not be allowable. So what I'm trying to do here, and I'll just, I'll, I'll just read. I'll start on the second line. Attendees are expected to be onsite overnight guests and, and offsite, non-overnight guests. These events will be expected to have a minimum of 25 guests, but not exceed a total of 600 offsite guests. Onsite guests without accounting. So you can see compared to the Graves model, it's quite, quite a few more. These events shall be small scale music events, group hikes, pick your own harvest, corn mazes, all similar events, and exempt agriculture activities. My note is, that's an important thing to remember. There will be no limit on the number of such events. However, the majority of such events will take place from April or November. And per section 15.2, 22886 dash 6 of the Code of Virginia, the daily total number of attendees paid for agriculture exempt activities may exceed 500, I meant to say 600, so just strike that out, may exceed 600 guests. I guess what I'm trying to say there, if, if you have some offsite people that call in, uh, for ag events, they are not going to be this, I don't want them to be necessarily counted toward this, this, this number of onsite guests. An ag exempt, sort of like a pumpkin patch, I'll just use that. Generally, you have people that sort of come throughout the course of the day. You might get several hundred through the course of the day. Now, the last sentence in this is, however, standalone music or non-musical performances. And so if you're having a performance, it's, it's just a standalone performance. Gathers and/or events in which attendance is expected to exceed 600 offsite guests shall be considered a major public event. And this must adhere to the divisions of N dot three, letter N, number three of this document. So if that makes sense to you, I'll go right into the major public events. I believe, uh, and, you know, I believe this is much improved, uh, than what we have seen, uh, in past versions. In this, been a pretty small change to this. The, the major public events are going to be governed by what is, was done as the Mass, the county's ordinance, the robot, the control and regulation, user containment estimates. It is not in this, so my familiar answer, which was not really, well, wasn't really there at all until a few weeks ago. But again, Graves comes, and I wasn't aware, for a year, they But, again, Graves comes, and I wasn't aware, or here, they, as I understand, they come every spring with their list of major events, bring them to the board. You know, what they do, we know what they're doing, it's predictable. They have their, they probably work like a pretty well-filled, you know, well-oiled machine with emergency services, getting people in and out. So, for major events, major concerts, festivals, fairs that might happen at the site, they would be required to come in and submit. I think annually is fine if they would come in every, let's just take a table in February. It said, here are the six events we're going to do. Here's how we're going to manage those events. Do you have any questions? It would need to be approved by the board. It's pretty clear. So, I've taken out all language, about two thousand attendees, that's true. Look, if it's a major event, you're going to need to come to the board. Did you make a provision, sort of in the same sphere with Graves? Is that it's a multiple day, if it's a multiple day event, I'd exceed three days, that would be considered one event. Now, I do understand that if you're against this, it doesn't really matter what we write here, it's probably not to your satisfaction. But, with that being said, I'm open to suggestions to approve this, I mean, obviously. But, I do think where this document is now is in a better place. It provides, I hope, this Miller feels that this is, she can run a business and be successful, and I hope that it provides at least to everyone who has concerns that there's enough, it's robust enough that we have the ability to really regulate these events. Lastly, and this will be my last statement, is on the noise. And as I said in my report, that, look, the events, talking about the events, it's nuanced. There's a lot of moving parts that are, that are hard to sometimes kind of capture in words. But, I did try my best. But, the sound, you know, the county does not have a sound ordinance, and I've had experience with sound ordinances, and most of them have not been real positive. I think it's an easy proposition. You come up with a time, and you say that, you know, this is what it needs to cut off. I don't have a lot more to add to that. You know, if the Land Commissioner of County is inclined to get into decibels and offsite noise, that's fine, but I think an easier, more measurable way to say it is say, you've got to stop at this time and amplify. What we have now, all outdoor electronic applications shall cease at eleven P M from Thursday to Saturday. It is an event venue. I will say, being at the site, you know, it's a large site in the middle of the site, you don't have to be really loud to escape, but there are some... I'm not, you know, saying that it couldn't happen, but it is, this is a large parcel that I do believe that if properly situated, it could be minimized. But, from Sunday through Wednesday, outdoor electronic applications shall cease at ten P M. With an exception, state or national holidays that fall Sunday through Wednesday, in the case, electronic services cease at eleven. Annually, three public events may electronically... Now, they should take the public out. I do apologize. Annually, three events may electronically pass down till midnight. And these events shall adhere to all provisions and requirements of Madison County's ordinance to provide for the control and regulation of user containment. So, with that said, you know, I did, in closing, land use decisions are emotional, even minor ones. I said this at the workshop we had a few weeks ago. I appreciate everyone from the public and the conversations I've had with everyone, and these conversations can continue. I just do want to impress on anyone that might have reservations, and I completely understand those reservations, is that, you know, again, there are a lot of regulatory controls, processes here moving forward. And this results orient, you know, in order to move forward, you know, there's a lot that has to be done, there's a lot that has to be reviewed. We're going to accept nothing less but what's required and what's good for Madison County, I believe. So, any questions for me? And I'll sit down with you and read the comments. Any questions for me, again, on the events or any part of this application?
I would, Mr. Web, I suggest that we hold those until we hear from the applicant, and then here will be all the letters, and then we'll come back to the planning commission for questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stone, would y'all like to amend our...
Hi, I'm Sue Miller, working on S R A project, working on business development. This is actually the first time we're seeing this document. I had a conversation with Mr. Webb yesterday, and he was proposing lowering the number from the major to minor. And I explained to him, after speaking with Brian Thompson, who is working with us on our events, why the change from the thousand to six hundred is not an economically feasible suggestion for us. And we did reach an agreement on Friday that you guys have all seen and we've all worked on. So, we ask that you approve, you know, based on what was presented before, rather than this new document that we're just all seeing right now. If there are concerns from the board, you know, about not, you know, I think a large part of the problem in the community is an unlimited number, three hundred and sixty-five nights a week of minor events that are potentially up to a thousand people. I think an easier way of dealing with this issue is potentially placing a cap on a minor event that goes up to a thousand people by a number, not necessarily lowering the number of attendees. And I think that's a way that we can make everyone feel comfortable if the board feels it's necessary to make such a change. The other thing is if we are going to go forward with looking at Mr. Webb's new proposal, we before had minor events up to a thousand people. Basically, that was unlimited, and we had major events that were thousand or six. So, this is basically saying, anything over six hundred people, we still only have six. So, we would want to propose that that number would have to be expanded at that point, nor for us to have an economically feasible business model.
And I would say, the number is easily to change. If, you know, that's totally, if you just, you know, whatever that number is we come to, it can be changed. So... Please continue.
So, you know, we basically felt that, you know, a reasonable number could be saying the minor, you know, minor events of up to, you know, twelve to fifteen, whatever, if you guys feel more comfortable, keeping everything the same the way that it was before, but just saying, ag exempt activities are not limited. Those are people trickling in and out throughout the day. Let's say if it's just a music-only event, where the main draw is that if there's going to be music playing, that there would only be, you know, twelve to fifteen, whatever number we come up with. Twelve, I think, would be reasonable a year. And then, add the six major events, that would be above. Personally, I mean, it would wind up being that way anyway, because it's, you know, we're not going to run events three hundred and sixty-five, you know, days a year. That's not feasible for any business to do that. So, you know, we're very comfortable leaving everything the way that it was before, but if that was a concern, that it's this open-handed, you know, you're going to do this every single night, and then we could, I think, you know, we talked about putting a cap on it to make people feel more comfortable rather than changing the numbers. And we do have Brian Thompson here with us this evening, and he can talk to some of the economic impacts of what it would do for our business if we are lowering these number of attendees in terms of what it would do. We have fixed costs and what it would do in terms of ticket prices, and we would like people from the community to be able to afford to come to, you know, whatever we would like to do there, as well as some information that he has regarding technology use for sound and noise during these types of events that control noise travel. So, if you'd like to hear from Mr. Thompson, he can speak to that. Otherwise, you know, we can now move on.
Okay.
Good evening. I have some documents...
I'm sure you can put your name for the record, please.
Sure, Brian Thompson, and I'm the owner of Innovative Audio and Sound, an audio/video production company, and typically do turnkey events. Been doing so for twenty plus years in the area. I put together some documentation that I can, and this comes from just years of experience putting these kinds of events on, from a cost basis to give you an idea when we say economically feasible, as well as what it would cost the community. And I can share some of that with you if you'd like for your review, if you like that.
Yes?
Sure. I need one copy, so I can speak to it. So, if you look at the small event function, by the time you have a headliner of entertainment, we're calling here a headliner band, a warm-up band, and this is there again, speaking to what Mr. Stone was proposing earlier, a music-only event. Costs for headliner bands, warm-up bands, the staging that has to be brought in, the production for running the event, the lighting, the event management, event insurance, security, fire, convenience, general staff, and what it comes up to from a number of twenty-eight thousand five hundred for a single-day event. Divide that by a thousand at cost, okay, with no profit for the team here, twenty-eight fifty per person. You go down to seven fifty, that's thirty-eight dollars per person. Five hundred, fifty-seven dollars per person. Two hundred and fifty, a hundred and fourteen dollars per person. So, at what point do you, you know, do you limit one's ability to financially make money at a event like this? That's really the concern. This is a realistic approach, or what I would call a super-regional band. Somebody like Big Ray and the Cool Cats, who are probably very well-known in the area, especially with my age and above. You know, it can go a little up, it can go a little down, but this is kind of a good medium from a small venue functionality. So, limiting it to six hundred would drastically increase ticket price, and I believe make it unaffordable for people for a super-regional band. I can see somebody coming in and spending, you know, a hundred-plus dollars for, for example, the local artist, Dave Matthews, which would draw a much larger crowd, but we're not talking about that. We're talking about super-regional entertainment, locally known. I don't see people spending fifty, sixty dollars per ticket for a super-regional. They're just not that well-known, they're doing covers, and so on. For the large event, over a thousand people, same kind of criteria, the cost obviously goes up significantly, totaling about ninety thousand five hundred dollars. Starting at a thousand people, the ticket price, and there again, this is that cost, being ninety dollars and fifty cents, fifteen hundred participants, sixty dollars and thirty-three cents. Two thousand people, forty-five dollars and twenty-five cents per ticket. Twenty-five hundred people, thirty-six dollars, twenty cents. And three thousand people, thirty dollars and seventeen cents cost, without any profit for the team here. That said, when I look at this, you know, we, with the proposal, or suggestion of the previous document of having unlimited events versus twelve to fifteen events a year, you know, small events are very risky from the standpoint of funding. We are taking all of the risk on in a public event from an advertisement perspective, as well as cost of infrastructure, and, you know, we would like to think we will build it and people will show, but that isn't always the case. There's a large amount of risk there. For larger events, where you're getting a national function participant, and the advertisement is a greater, there is, I would say, less risk. Throw on top of that weather. Has anybody considered weather? Had rainstorm over an event, well, you just lost all your money. So, in consideration for this, a thousand attendees for a small event, and a thousand or greater for a large event, make it more economically feasible, considering all the risks that are taken in that, and have to be backed there. As far as sound goes, I understand that, and I have read over the past week or so up on the website, a lot of the concerns from the public regarding sound. You know, distance is on your side because of the property, so that's a great thing. But, beyond that, today, from modern sound systems, there are technologies out there for controlling sound. And I'll give you an example. Martin Audio makes a loudspeaker system called the M L A. And it is, you know, if you've ever been to a concert, you see the banana hanging function, all bananas hanging up in the sky, producing the sound. We can actually put conditions, electronically conditions, on the audio to have hard sets. I'll give you an example. If this area here is my venue that I'm shooting for, I think literally, by default, the speaker is capable, or the speaker system is capable of a hundred and twenty degrees of cast. And I can actually put hard stops. I can say, I want this sound to only go forty-five degrees this way and thirty-five degrees this way, and be at a certain sound pressure level at the audience at ten feet, twenty feet, thirty feet, however large the venue is, I can actually model that. I also take in consideration diffusion, reflection, and absorption. So, I can put hard limits on audio function, which will reduce and effectively eliminate any noise to neighbors. The other way of doing it, which is, which you can't do in this case, you can do in a facility, like an open-public facility, like they had in Charles' old facility, they can put sound baffling and absorbent materials in there to control it, okay? But, we don't have that, so we would effectively use technology, being our friend, to control that sound pressure level and put hard limits on that. And based on ANSI rules and things of that nature, regardless, you know, we can only expose people to so much sound pressure level over a given time anyway. I literally, if the sound was here, I could step this way and be in the sound and not have a conversation, and literally step two feet away from it and be able to have a conversation with anyone in this room. That's how good the technology is. Done with DSPs and steering of the signal. Any questions on that, or anything I've said? So manufacturers that do that are Martin Audio, Meyer Sound, DB Audio Technica, JBL, and I do incorporate that, and most everybody in the area that has a modern system incorporates that in their system today.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson. We may have a couple more questions later.
Yep, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, according to order, normally the planning commission asks his questions before we do the public comment. I think we need to, the planning commission be able to ask some questions of the kingdom or whoever they may be before we do the public comment, is a normal procedure, the way we do it.
Mr. Chairman, I agree a hundred percent. I was trying to get into reading of all of the letters and emails sent in and then go back to that process, make it real clear, and it says we'll come for something, I guarantee. That's where I was hoping, if we had to get those letters out, I can focus on the questions. But if the planning commission would like to go ahead and ask those questions now, at the afternoon, at the grand, go ahead and do that. Anybody else? Anyone? Okay. We will hold our questions to the end, but right now, I'd like to go ahead and try to get a reading of the, the other documents submitted.
Thank you, Mr. Moscow. This is the first time we've done it, so we're sort of making this up as we go. The deal is, the deal I have in my heart here is that I'll go as long as I can, my voice starts to crack, I'll either sit down or ask you to sit down. There are a series of letters and emails here, there's some sign petitions at the back of the package, some of these are rather long, if you want to enforce the three-minute rule of somebody with timing, I'll let you know when we get to it. I think there's a set space right there, I know just.
Yes, there is.
For that, so, I can get started if you're ready.
Please do.
Okay. This first is a letter from Janice Richter, 334 Blair Trail Range, Rochelle. I have several questions regarding the request by Barbara Miller for a special use permit to develop Crissier, commercial rural resort between forty-two buildings on seven hundred and forty-nine acres in the area. I hope that the Madison Board of Supervisors would answer these six questions before they voted for August five meeting. In her request for an S U P, Ms. Miller calls herself an environmentalist, so why she not ask the county for a comprehensive independent environmental impact study to be sure her project would not adversely affect a land in the Rapid End? Why has the county decided not to request such a study? Why has the county board made only minimal efforts to engage community and pledge for guarding such major development project? Our county planner assures us that the board will have to approach each step of the site development, but there is no requirement that Board of Supervisors hold hearings for public input for approving each step. VDOT reports that the highest deep traffic peak on 231 currently is a hundred and forty-five vehicle trips per hour. VDOT's reassurance that the expected traffic increase will not be too great seems unrealistic. Maximum dependence, the board admits, at one thousand people, certificate exiting vehicles after a concert, fireworks display, or private events would certainly be much greater than a hundred and forty-five vehicles per hour. Aside from congestion, I'll say this, if people have a town who are unfamiliar with 231's twists and turns, drive after dark on a road with no lighting. Given the vagueness of the current plan, I assume B O S plans to work closely with Ms. Miller in a collaborative manner. There's stress and a great deal of trust between B O S and Ms. Miller. A new owner might not inspire or deserve such trust. Why does the county want to maintain control over the development of this property to future owners? It could change its hands. I can understand why this provision is in Ms. Miller's interest, but does it protect the interest of the other thirteen thousand residents of Madison County? Has the county done a cost-benefit analysis that takes into account added costs for waste removal, security details, emergency services, et cetera? What protects the county from occurring the cost of restoring the land should this project fail financially? Finally, given that we are in the midst of a historic pandemic, why would Madison County proceed to approve a plan that would regularly draw hundreds of people from outside the county together in large groups? Not only would the attendees be potentially exposed, but all the staff working at facilities along with county personnel, merchants, volunteers would be exposed. The risk of creating a hotspot outbreak in Madison would be greatly increased. If B O S members cannot answer these questions adequately, then they should find a way to postpone approval as the issue being, so they can answer these concerns. This next piece is from William E. Bill Chrisch, property owner of the Rapid End River, Madison Mills. To only make concern, please distribute this to the members of both the planning commission and board of supervisors to be part of the public record. As a landowner near the proposed development, I have concerns about the size of this project, the incompleteness of the applicant's bills, limited review process, special use permit system that appears to favor the applicant. I support tourism as a low-impact way to introduce visitors to the area, raise revenue, provide an opportunity for unique and diverse business ventures such as primaries, restaurants, E and Bs, historical and cultural tours, et cetera. Tourism is and will continue to be a valuable resource. However, it is absolutely essential to conduct a thorough evaluation now and set guidelines to ensure that these developments reflect the values and character of this project. For serious tourism on an industrial scale, it has a clear potential to adversely affect residents of immediate, immediate destiny and significantly change the character of the immediate area in county for decades to come, which is concerned about the negative impacts of noise, traffic, crowds, et cetera, and the inevitable degradation of the community and character. I am in agreement. As noted in the Semellos, Ms. Miller has initiated preliminary efforts to address these issues, though the information is inadequate to evaluate the effects of a fully-developed project. Project scope has grown larger, ever larger, and the expert opinions lie behind. It would be a mistake to test the special use permit on reports and assumptions made for a small project, but the real intent is to create a much larger. As in per test, a pair of engineers reporting for the hopes of increased tax revenue alone do not serve as reason to open the door to such high-impact use. Please exercise due diligence now to ensure that such developments reflect the values and character of the county, its residents. It's my opinion that this development is not necessarily out of place, but is rather too large, the impacts have not been fully evaluated. Specifically, I believe this permit and any other permits issued under the Event Venue Rural Resort ordinance should be tied to the owner slash operator about the property. I currently have no reason to doubt the vision Ms. Miller has presented for her property. However, her variant concepts may change, whether by pressure from future partners, investors, economic necessity, or sale of property. New investors slash owners may be driven by reasons that do not reflect Ms. Miller's local values. Her own special use permit allows for hundreds to thousands of people to attend events any day of the year. This may sound extreme, it is likely just a total, because more use may be required to foot bills. At the very least, there should be language in the S U P and T A and county enforcement to compel new owners to honor the permit and be good neighbors. In conclusion, I currently oppose this special use permit for the following reasons. Permit should not be transferable with the property, permit should be tied to the owner slash operator. If this simple request is not possible, the language of the S U P and enforcement measures must be sufficiently strong to guarantee compliance with the law of the permit. The Crissier project appears incomplete and purposeless. Granted, the S U P at this time were filled without full evaluation of the expected estimate. Creates unacceptable risk for neighbors in county. Thank you for your time and consideration. Next letter is five pages long.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ray, is this a legal requirement that we write? Read all these into the record, and do you recommend that we continue?
It is not a legal requirement that I recommend that we do so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thompson.
And this is a five-page letter. This one is from, like your work, A. Chip Chrisch Jr., and Mary Stroke Reach.
Could we stop and talk?
I believe it's more appropriate.
Yeah, three minutes.
Sorry, Mr. Ray.
I believe it's appropriate to read the letters in their entire.
We're not prepared to summarize, obviously. I think it's a very, right.
It's gonna take some time, please continue.
Yes, sir. No timing for three minutes, so.
I don't know if it would do any good, so.
Dear members of the Madison County Board of Supervisors, the Madison County Planning Commission, and Madison County's Army Department, my wife and I are residents of and property owners in Madison County on the Rapid End River at Madison Mills. We're submitting additional public comments regarding Crissier's O L C's proposed special use permit application to the Crissier Resort O L C for proposed development. Previous comments are submitted in a letter dated June 30, 2020, and submitted by mail, fully incorporated by reference herein. Let us ensure that a copy of these comments is provided to each member of the Board of Supervisors, each member of the planning division, and each member of the Army Department, as well as a copy included in the county file of public comments regarding this project. Please add us to those of persons who desire to receive notice, actions on, and/or related to case number, issue 0720-14, indoor actions associated with the Crissier Resort project. Crissier Resort Special Use Permit Application is the first being processed under the new Madison County Event Venue Ordinance, so it is unsurprising that there have been issues looking through the details. Despite this being a first-time process, the S U P application has been moving quickly from initial proposal to final form for submission to the Board of Supervisors. Along the way, the S U P has been modified by letters from the applicant that believes public still wondering what size and scope the project will be. Right now, size, scope, number, and size of events, noise, traffic, water, subject, accommodation, or are still moving targets. In the following bullet points, we'd like to point out a number of inconsistencies and moving targets in the latest version of the S U P application package posted in the Agenda Package for the July 15, 2020 planning workshop. These issues must be addressed in order to create a complete S U P application package for citizens to review and the Board of Supervisors to vote. Reference page number four will refer to the page order in the PDF file that was available on the Planning Commission meeting website since July 2020. Page 38, list of proposed special, proposed site facilities. The eleventh of twelve list of facilities states as, stated as, quote, "Nine," but says "Twelve," "Brutal and winding sites unknown to both sides." Looking back at the June posting of the prior file, same line read, "Nine," but says "Nine" "Brutal and winding." Is this a typo, or is the applicant increasing the size and scope of the project again? The county must hold a line on project size. Page 39, subject to more considerations. There is no letter other than documentation cited, there is no letter or other documentation cited, only a reference to a county plan or testament. During public comment, Miller indicated that studies have been performed, need have provided any indication of whether the assessments are based on early estimates of site usage or the more recent expanded scope numbers. Be inappropriate to issue a S U P based on misguided assumptions or an estimate of any supported data. The Crissier vision statement indicates that there will be significant land usage for buildings, roads, parking, venue, trails, agriculture, all while retaining what trees are already there. Miller indicated only removing three, three trees built out. A reasonable person with rudimentary understanding of subject fields, i.e. a person who has lived with and seen, has seen to the maintenance of the home subject system, understands that the subject system cannot be located in a floodplain, in the crops and trees, under a building, under a road, or parking area, may be questionable under a highly-used gathering area where the ground is, etc. Subject fields can be located under agricultural land, however, at this latest round of amendments from the applicant, there is, there is discussion about using agricultural land for major event parking. Besides the reality that parking tourism field on a rainy day is problematic, the applicant is planning six to twelve major events a year, each for an undefined number of days, and using agricultural land for overflow parking would have serious impact on viability of that land for agriculture, so it was as eliminate it as subject site. Since the applicant proposes to phase development, the applicant would not be expected to nail down all future uses. Per test, establish field sizes for all future contingencies before applying for the S U P. However, looking at the breadth of the vision for the Crissier, a reasonable review would include some rough estimates of the area required for subject fields, sufficient to accommodate two thousand-plus people. Remember, subject is designed for peak use, there's no surge allowance. They compared this again, this against the land area available after eliminating floodplain, tree areas, estimates for the area covered by buildings, roads, parking, overflow parking, any used venue, venue area. Instead, the applicant has proposed to take, quote, "If it works out, stances development takes place." Summarily, the S U P provides no justification for assuming the well capacity exists and that well size can be hidden around buildings and subject, et cetera. This weight and work-it-out approach is not defensible, forming simple upward scoping assessments, but defensible assumptions that provide rough feasibility estimates count and then allows potential for later risks to the applicant and county. Page 39 through 40, entrance, traffic impacts, and analysis. The provided June 10, 2020 letter from VDOT was written before the size and scope of the Crissier project was increased. It would only be reasonable to assume that since there is a later letter that VDOT is unaware of the new projections, pre-size and scope of the project. For this reason, Addison needs to assume that VDOT did not know whether there would might be traffic issues in phase one of the project, unless it will doubt. Provided document, developer focus on small events and mid-sized events like craft fairs, where participants may come and go over time, producing surge effects. Very gentle major event assessment, assuming best possible conditions, attempts to form all, attempts to form ways of concerns. Therefore, is not provided, is sufficient assessment of the effect of larger events with defined start and or finish times that would be expected of a given surge. You ready?
I'm ready to go on.
The thing.
Can I question my question?
That's right. I apologize.
For anyone else who's going to be speaking tonight, we do have some Clorox rinse wipes, so before you speak, if you want to wipe it down, or after you speak, do what we can to eliminate any COVID risk. I am picking up on page three at the very beginning, page 40, Analysis of Applicant's Proper Conditions Letter. This section speaks to the applicant's middle of a signed voluntary proper letter attached. It is assumed that this is the letter dated June 30 that is provided on pages 33 to 36 of the PC Agenda Package for the July 15 meeting. This letter references an earlier letter stating that it clarified and expanded upon some topics from the letter dated June 26, 2020 ellipsis. Should a reasonable person assume that the June 30 letter supersedes the June 26 letter, or should this be interpreted as the two letters together forming a complete package? The intention being to build a complete application package that can stand on its own merits. By building a package that is missing pieces and creating confusion by referencing other material not included in the package, it's not possible to figure out whether the real scope of the project has been assessed. The June 30 applicant letter also states that the applicant's desire that the S U P and its proper slash conditions be transferable with the land. This is a difficult proposal. While the applicant may have an enticing vision, there is no guarantee that she can turn this into a practicable execution. That means there will always be potential for sale to another developer. Business concerns favor having the S U P transfer with the property, while both local landowner concerns favor the addition, favor attaching the S U P to the developer. Attachment to the developer provides Madison and the citizens of the county with the greatest control over the future of the development. If Madison allows the transfer as proposed, S U P running with the land, then Madison must impose conditions on the S U P that prevent it from being open-ended, such that the new developer purchasing the land, S U P believes that they were given implied consent to develop a project far more than risk than what is unconcerned here. Regardless of the approach, the S U P must contain limitations on number, type, and duration of events, hours of operation, amplified movement. duration of events, hours of operation, amplified most cutoff times, days of the week, and more. If Madison considers the undesirable approach allowing the S U P to transfer with the land, then Madison should impose on the proposed S U P a requirement that if the land is sold, any proposed changes to the operation of the property venue will require a new S U P or amended S U P with public comment and PC B O S vote. The intent is to ensure that the other operator of the property venue continues to maintain the character, health, safety, and desirability of the county. Another point the S U P needs to address is whether the S U P will expire if the applicant could not act within a specified time period. It would not be in Madison County's interest to allow a S U P to lie dormant for years, then have a new owner pick up the S U P and try to act. Finalization of the S U P application needs to include an expiration time limit if the intent of the S U P is not exercised. Page 40, analysis of applicant's proper conditions letter, continued comments, there are still disconnects between submitted reference documents concerning the number of units and guests accommodated. Page 41, analysis of applicant's proper conditions letter, there are still disconnects between the submitted reference document with regards to number and length of large events. The number of events have been fluctuated from two to 12 and has not been finalized. Furthermore, there has been no definition of whether an event is one day or 30 days. Page 41 cites number of events 12, providing the June 26 letter, while the June 30 letter cites six. Large events are a major concern of the community, so the discrepancy in number of events in ignoring how many days an event can run are examples highlighting critical errors that must be corrected in the application package. Concerns about no one says also not been addressed. Press array is, is that correct? Press array is located in a rural setting with many families living nearby. Allowing an unlimited number of bands to produce amplified sound until midnight implicitly allows unlimited noise until midnight, 365 days a year. Madison must impose a cutoff time for outdoor amplified sound. There's like school-aged children, citizens who have to go to work each morning, privacy of neighbors. A reasonable cutoff would be 8:00 PM Sunday through Thursday nights, 10:00 PM Friday and Saturday nights, and no amplified sound before 8:00 AM. After the outdoor cutoff time, activities can be indoors, but since this does not preclude transmission of loud noises to neighboring properties, the indoor cutoff should only allow one additional hour beyond the outdoor cutoff. This allows guests a means to wind down their activities in a controlled manner that minimizes impact to surrounding properties. If Press array wanted to have a special event event longer on a given night, that is Fourth of July or New Year's Eve, they could petition the Board of Supervisors for a special single use permit for that event. Page 43, update. A member of the Board of Supervisors recently discovered that the Virginia State Code provides the county with the authority to impose conditions on a special use permit application. While it is preferable for an applicant to propose and conform to reasonable limits on a special use permit proposal, this authority provides the county with a means to set bounds and conditions such that Madison's needs and concerns were addressed. General, not addressed in the proposed S U P application, fire, rescue, and police resources are not addressed in the S U P. Madison has limited fire, rescue, and police resources. It has seen in large events Graves Mountain Lodge, smaller than what large would be at Press array. These resources would be stretched beyond them if there were concurrent events, that is Fourth of July, county venues, graves, common wireeries, roads, et cetera. A possibility for Madison to consider might be to require those running major events, not just applications to Press array, to pay into a county fund, out of which Madison County could pay for county resource over time and subcontracting additional resources from neighboring municipalities. There does not seem, appear to have been any attempt to assess the Madison County S U P requirements for an event venue against those that may be in use by surrounding municipalities. Ordinances from any surrounding counties are available online. A quick search for S U P and ordinance or several near my cities municipality shows that their codes have many S U P references. Searching the web, there appear to be many references to state requirements that have worked out issues related to transfer with the land, expiration, revocation for cause, and more. Evaluating what already exists where S U P related legal issues have been resolved and codified could help establish appropriate legally justified conditions for the proposed S U P. Taking an extra month in creation process for this S U P to perform this assessment before this assessment could minimize the risk of significant challenges in future. Above problems with the development and review of the application package highlight the reality that the applicant has not taken her vision from conceptual to practical concept. And the county is experiencing burthen pains with this first attempt to issue an event venue S U P. While some of these problems should have been as partially anticipated, the issues about also the light highlight the fact that the Planning Commission Board of Supervisors can hardly keep up with the rapid changes in the applicant's proposal, much less proof reading the material they are posting. Check state code for S U P statutes and county citizens inform. Time is money for a developer, but correcting planning errors can be very expensive for the county. The applicant is an experienced New York developer with highly experienced development support. Madison does not have this breadth of expertise demonstrated by just learning that it has the authority under state code to impose conditions on any S U P by recognizing that without noise ordinances, it must develop reasonable cutoff times for outdoor amplified events, that subject needs could be stoked relative to the land use and land available, and more. It is unfathomable to think that highly experienced, actual renowned expert consultants or who Press array were not aware of these things. For this reason, Madison should not rush into work it out on the flying S U P application for the venue are larger than in Madison is seen. Therefore, Madison should not consider approval of an incomplete S U P if it does not provide adequate protection to the county, knowing so could lead Madison County taxpayers to pick up the tab when changes have to be made later. The critical information necessary to properly develop the proposed S U P is still not complete. The applicant still appears to be trying to figure out how to progress from grand vision to a practicable development of proposed. Madison County is still learning how to develop an event venue S U P. We are three weeks out from the proposed Board of Supervisors' vote on the S U P. Planning Commission needs this week to try to finalize the proposal. Assuming agreement can be reached, take this very few days with the finalized paperwork before the final document needs to be posted for public review. Two-week review concurrent with the meeting announcement. With the scope of unresolved issues on the table and the difficulties to date assembly and proofing of a complete document, it will be difficult for the Planning Commission to have a document ready to recommend to the Board for the November 1st. To minimize risk to the county and developer, we recommend that the Planning Commission charge of developing a draft of the finalized S U P before the August 5 quarterly. Present the draft S U P to the Board of Supervisors at the August 5 meeting, and give the board two weeks of review before the board then charges the Planning Commission, including their comments and any additional public comments, and finalize the document during the August meeting. This should provide sufficient time for everyone involved to have their input, the Planning Commission to ensure that a complete and accurate application package is finished and posted in time for the Board of Supervisors to vote for September. Respectfully submitted by Robert K. Schiff Quich Jr. and Mary Stro Quich. This next letter, email dated August 5, 2020, directed to the web from Barry Segal. Sir, I write to you because of my concern about the proposed construction of the resort named above. Madison County has no noise ordinance. It seems that the owner of this resort is planning to play music from loudspeakers most of the day and evening until 11:00 PM. I have no objection to music as such, but I strongly object to nonstop amplified music. There is no defense against this assault on the ears of people who do not want to hear it. Therefore, I propose a ban on amplified music or to the least, the limit be enforced after the festival level allowed. Again, that's Barry L. Segal, M.B. This next letter is from Russell L. Riley. This is dated August 5, 2020. The Madison County zoning ordinance, zoning laws, rather. I recently received in the mail your notice of a major development by Cristalus, Cristalus LLC off the Blue Ridge Turnpike. I appreciate me giving the opportunity to respond as this is very alarming news. I strongly urge you to refuse to grant this variance, which is wholly inconsistent with the rural character of this area. This so-called Agnew Resort under my very thing that reports to promote, quiet virtues are for caring living. My family and I live two miles of the crow flies from this proposed development. Since you are surely hearing from many others, allow me to focus on three specific externality elements. These are costs others will bear, headed in Madison County to allow a special permit to get work. Number one, the noise. As you ask people in the city why they moved here, I'm certain that within the top two of the three reasons, you would hear peace and quiet. It is astonishing that the current proposal we're doing would allow for outdoor amplified music hours after many of us retire for the night. Country people don't tend to be over risers, or tend to be over risers. The proposal I've seen online just is out of hand, the possibility that their music might burden neighbors. This is demonstrably ridiculous. Our residence is also just under two miles from the railroad tracks across the Blue Ridge Turnpike, and on some nights, it sounds to us as though the train runs through our front yard. We don't mind this, it came with the house. But the point is that noise in these parts carries regardless of how many trees you have. Any amplified outdoor music is one proposed across on people beyond their boundaries, regardless of their life, dispicil, and identity. Anyone who is in a car road next to them at a traffic light, playing music they don't care for should appreciate our concerns. Right to do this should not convey to the owners when, should not convey to the owners when this property was purchased, or being asked to give it to them. Traffic, anyone inclined to have great confidence in the assessment of what this will do to traffic in the area is invited to go have a look now at the southwest quadrant of the 23120 intersection, where the whole Somerset store now stands as a heap of rush. There's spelled by a speeding tractor trailer rig that two minutes before had arrow passed across Alex property. Were gears various intensive and maybe total traffic at that intersection, which would surely be one of the major transit points for this development. And each one failed. This included all manner of signage, plus rumble strips, and finally, now a rotary. Will that work? We honestly have no idea, but having lived here for eight years, I have strong doubts. These roads are dangerous precisely because they are rural thoroughfares, and you so often by those from the outside, you do not know when to drive too fast. It would be wise to await making firm statements on traffic into and out of the Cristalus development until we have actual evidence that it will not aggravate one of the area's most dangerous intersections. Moreover, what happens there means break humility and making funnies about traffic elsewhere on the Blue Ridge Turnpike. Number three, the Rapid End. Has anyone done a full assessment of the consequences of increased access and traffic on the Rapid End? A massive exercise in grave in construction is likely to have adverse implications coming down through this river. Have they intend to mark an additional water recreation on the river? There's also an externality that they impose on others who currently use the river. There are very few public takeout downriver from them, but they intend to facilitate trespassing on others' land and make possible trips downriver. What steps are being taken to deal with trash and other pollutants? As a riverfront landowner and a sometimes contributor to the nonprofit stream service group, I'm worried about overuse of this area as a private game. Before closing, allow me to express one further concern. The hospitality industry is famously mercurial. Success and failure are devilishly difficult to predict. Are you certain this project will succeed? If not, indeed, if you greenlight a project that is not a ruling success, this will assuredly not be the end of it. At that point, huge costs and jobs will be at stake, and we'll be confronted again with still more special pleadings to keep the enterprise afloat. And each of these pleadings will bring us back to mitigating the suitability for a thin parking and agricultural landscape. Keep that unhappy prospect in mind as you consider whether an exception is warranted in the first place. I will stop there. I fully understand that landowners ought to have great freedom in making use of their property, but there simply cannot be a presumption under par of a landowner of a right to special exceptions to its zoning. Such exceptions can make sense if they do not in any way, in any material way infringe on the rights of others, this proposal fails that test. Thanks for hearing me out, Russell L. Riley, Somerset, Virginia. Mr. Hawes, I'll turn it back over to you.
How far away, God, and it's like, give me a minute. Do you say we're a quarter of the way, God, or not?
We're a little more than a quarter of the way.
Oh, that's true.
I've not counted the number of documents. This next one is from the Piedmont Environmental Council, signed by Christopher Hawk.
That's what I was going to say. If I can skip a line. That's okay.
Point that lets you go. Okay, the next one here is another one from Bill Quich, received on, looks like an email received on June 26. I'm a resident, Madison County landowner, approximately six miles east of Chrisair, Chrisair Resort. I was recently surprised to learn that such a large development was being planned and that very few people were aware of it. I'm concerned about increased traffic and noise, ever since impacts to water quality and testing recreation opportunities on the Rapid End River. There's tough man sufficient public notification that provides your opportunity for input. Please close for any decisions to ensure that more information is made available. Thank you for your time. Signed, Bill Quich. Next one is email, I believe, from Elizabeth from Castle, June 27. To whom it may concern, please distribute my email to the members of both the Planning Commission Board of Supervisors as part of the public record. It appears the proposed Chrisair development project is being over. C O's have been pushed through by a few self-serving individuals and officials without allowing appropriate input from local residents. Without regard, how negatively this development will affect Madison County and surrounding areas. The speed at which this development has been pushed through Madison County government shows loudly that there is a vote to note consideration regarding noise pollution, increased traffic, water and sewer challenges, and to mention the quality of life for those that truly care about the landscape, country life, Madison County offers. The Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission in Madison County just rubber stamped this big development area zone for agricultural use. The Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission just shut out hearing opinions. The voters, residents, neighbors, and that is complete dictators. Decision process. This hearing should be rescheduled and reopened to the public, but the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors refuses to do so. Special use permit should be denied in its current form due to various concerns. He is elected to govern officials should be well aware, but it appears not. So let me help you out. This development would have major, negative impact on the environment, local road systems, and rural character of the area. Are you really rubber stamping 60,000 square feet of buildings, welcome center, restaurant, camping and lodging areas, a spa and a bar, and an open-air pavilion for large concerts? Let's not forget over, leaving over six acres of land zone agricultural. Shame on all of you. Abbreviated application process, lack of time, public influence, spells of corruption. How can you let this happen to you, county? And put in a fist, you see, that outweigh the multiple concerns, environmental concerns. The S U P would have joined the Rapid End River, serves as portable drinking water source, more realities downstream, including the tamboanch. The 50 camping cabins proposed would accommodate up to 100 overnight guests, while quarantines otherwise expected in hotel operations. Assured site-specific conditions would create large subject drain field impacts, potential for environmental impacts on the Rapid End River. Noise concerns. Madison County does not currently have a codified noise ordinance. Really, there is critical importance in having a noise ordinance in place, thus practices of governing. If none of you live nearby or have voters that have opposed this proposed development, quiet hours are enforceable by the police and require noise to the whole testing. Occupancy concerns. There is no mention of maximum occupancy, maximum event occupancy, the number of public and private events allowed by the legislature. Concerns for refusing to allow residents to spend in public here in person or online, in very least, since the pandemic is, Madison County recently closed this hearing to the public, make the meeting virtual. Come on, everyone, it's a 94-year-old mother. Strongly opposed to this closed-door decision from elected officials, by answering for listening to their decisions, residents or neighbors. People in Madison County deserve better, and they deserve to have their recourses, recourses protected, and we all have a responsibility as elected Madison County officials to adjust that. This development will ensure the very reasons, reasons tourists will be attracted to the county as, as mentioned before this. If this development is so fast-tracked with no public hearing, I predict the investigations will be rampant if everyone involved, the rest of the approval process. You could not have hoped for worse outcomes with all this concern that was. hoped for worse options with all this concern that was presented. Next, looks like an email received on June 28th, Cynthia Rippon, Orange, Virginia. Please distribute this letter to the Madison County Planning Commission and Madison County Board of Supervisors and include it in the public record regarding S U P akin to law. Strong zoning provides spaces of reasonable expectation of protection and a haven for a community of like-minded individuals. Indeed, the council advised land for the express purpose of shutting the zoning regulations according to the community's form of noise, light pollution, and increased traffic should be denied this one-minded fantasy. One developers will have the secretious issues of foreign land, others will arrive at similar expectations. Providing that the S U P would render the meaning of the word zoning agricultural in amounts. Zoning regulations should have been in teeth to prevent hodgepodge of development across the landscape. There are other questions that beg answers. Where will the staffing for this enterprise come from? Local businesses have trouble finding qualified workers in full-time positions at restaurants. How will similar jobs be filled when we can work? Business does not sustain itself. What will be done when stakeholders of foreign land are under payment? Careful consideration and impact study of the, the bond could be secured to restore the property to its agricultural use if this fails. The S U P could have a sunset revision if this occurs. These development rush to approve this S U P, denying it would be a better course of action. A write from an neighboring county because this is not a measure that should be insulated by county lines. We all reside in a broader landscape with search stewardship and protection. So respectfully submitted, Cynthia Rippon, Orange, Virginia.
This next correspondence is from Mark Warren of Somerset, Virginia. Mr. Webb, please include this email as part of Apollo Park Resort S U P and distribute this email to the members of the line, the Madison County Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. Your supervisors and commissioners, Madison County is a wonderful place to live, farm, work, and visit. Thank you all for your dedication to keeping this as a place that we all love. Agricultural zone land is the single most important thing that makes Madison County so special. When you combine with agricultural land in the surrounding Piedmont, we have this amazing place and lucky, that we lucky people get to live in and others want to visit and vacation. Please don't destroy this special place by allowing commercial development on the agricultural zone land formerly known as Kenwell Farm. Commercial development should be in commercially zoned areas. Please tell this developer to build a resort in an area that won't ruin the limited precious agricultural resources of the county to do otherwise and degrade the S U P and the grims and the parents and surrounding neighbors, and others who play by the rules and respect the agricultural zoning, this beautiful area of the county. In this rural area, we don't want to hear rock concerts at night. We don't want to have Route 30, Route 231 cloud with hundreds of people who have been drinking. We don't want the noise of 500 people partying day and night. And by the way, who is going to be counting? Not the county, which is always short on staff, certainly not the developer, who obviously has no concern for her neighbors. So if the S U P is approved, you know that whatever the maximum number allowed is, it will often will exceed it. Please vote no on this S U P, the scale of this proposal is far too large for the area. Please listen to your neighbors and people agricultural land. Agricultural zone land for agriculture and families with peace and quiet. Thank you, Mark Warren, Somerset. This next letter is from Jasmine Warren of Somerset. Dear supervisors and commissioners, please vote against the Chris Ray S U P. This scale of the proposed project is immense. There is no limit on the number of people who can attend on any given day. If 500 people attend an event, 300 people attend a concert, plus 100 campers and hundreds more at the bars and restaurants, you will have over 1,000 people in the resort. Day after day, forever, this will destroy the quality, the rural quality of life in the area. The Black and Music Festival in Met in Nelson County attracts 25,000 people each year in traffic, and leave behind mountains of trash and sewage. Please don't let this happen in rural Madison County. This land is zoned agricultural, please leave it agricultural for farmers and families to use and enjoy. This next letter is from Charlotte Teaken. Dear Madison County Planning Commissioner, the O S, my name is Charlotte Teaken. I live at Weyland Farm in Somerset, Virginia. My late husband, Theodore Teaken, and I have been farming in the Wood Madison in Orange County since 1986. The Madison County Farm, Weyland Farms, Hartley, Woods, Kenwell, Chris Ray Resort. On Theodore's death, the farm was divided into three parcels, two of which have been sold for purely agricultural use. It is the intention that the tour will follow the same course as it is its designated agricultural zoning. What this S U P proposes is in direct contradiction to agricultural zoning guidelines. We all want progress, not only for our individual county, but for all major counties as well as our state at large, moving forward in a responsible and educated way as necessary. Tourism is one vehicle that must be achieved at the highest standard. That's not error in the other direction. I have lived in other states and have seen firsthand what happens when land use changes and pushed through too fast. Mediocrity was not in dwell. This S U P sets a bad precedent for future requests, most important to the entire county. This development would have a severe impact on the existing infrastructure. 60,000 square feet of brick and mortar are really necessary for the immediate endurance. Weekend after weekend of noise from wedding bands and rock concerts and the endless excessive traffic and overuse of recreation on the Rapid End River collectively would be a travesty. I would like to conclude by applauding the support of the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. I can assume that each of your dedicated efforts stem from your appreciation of living in such a beautiful place, and that each of you is grateful. It's a world wide, let these past months of turbulent times allow us to reflect how we can work more closely as communities become good. Moving forward, with this S U P, I achieve that, respectfully, Charlotte Teaken, P. O. Box 514, Somerset, Virginia. This next letter is from Gregory May. Your service in Madison County is a particularly fine place to live and work with a generation of Virginia farmers who respected its agricultural land and respected the rights of their neighbors. I'm confident you will have these core Virginia values in mind when you stare at Chris Al Salafic. Application to develop Kenwell in this letter is simply to emphasize the importance of the decision, not only to the citizens of Madison County, but for all of us who live on agricultural land in adjacent counties. This Chris Allen development application as presented to you does not respect the values protected by agricultural existence for at least two fundamental reasons. Development is extensive as the one provided will create conditions that are inappropriate for an agricultural area, and that no rural county government can be expected to survive effectively. The traffic noise and light pollution from the development will change the area for everyone who lives there. They bring one landowner over all others this way and endangering all drivers on a country road that already has presented safety concerns. It's unfair to everyone, move along in zoning decisions and inconsistent with the county's other most responsibility to protect local self-help and safety. A rural county does not require and then does, and therefore does not have the administrative capacity to supervise the development part outside of the bounds of normal land use. Proper supervision would make demands on the county resources that would prevent the county from serving other citizens and in any event, make it quite likely that the developer does not perform as promised. The excessive demands on county administration would continue even after the development's completed, because without ongoing supervision would be no way to hold the developer to its proffered. Number two, the development application as presented makes no showing at all that the developer is capable of financing or managing the execution of the proposed plan. Financing is an essential element of any executable plan. The application simply fails to explain how the developer has capitalized what the proposed development will cost and how the developer can obtain the necessary funding. Developments like the one proposed not uncommonly fail not only for lack of sustainable financing, especially in economic downturn, but also from the absence of the range of management resources needed to complete and operate the developer. The application does not show whether this developer has the necessary experience and management resources. When land developments fail, it is the neighbors and the county government who live with the consequences and the shape of spoiled land and a reduced tax base that comes with the damage to county lands. No developer therefore should be granted special use permission without a clear demonstration that it has the money and ability to see the project through. This next letter is from Rhodes Purdue, dated June 29th. Dear Mr. Webb, I am adjacent to the Chris Ray development. I am aware that the obtained zoning deal will allow for special use permit. I thought I would notify the business like, considering the additional property which directly affected. If not, for friends and neighbors, I would not know about the meeting tomorrow. I have a phone email at this address in Madison County in a post office box address. Why was I not informed as an adjacent property? I don't know of these proceedings. Notice in the local papers, a poor excuse for any type of news with this impact. There is no problem sending tax bills, but there is no direct interest to do about any of this. I won't belabor that point. Please understand that I do not object to my neighbor's use of her property so long as it does not impact me and my quiet enjoying of my property. I do not want to listen to other people's music and crowd noise and generators of traffic noise at any time of day. Large public events with no limit on capacity are not consistent with rural zoning. I'm sure that others have made their concerns known more specificity, but my time to respond is limited. Please note my objections as to inadequate notice and unlimited crowd and noise reported to Rhodes Purdue. This next letter is from Elizabeth and David Purdue of Somerset, Virginia. Dear, dear legal web, appreciate this email with memories of the Madison County Planning Commission. We live on Liberty Mills Road in Somerset, Orange County. Obviously not in Madison County, but on the Rapid End River, very close to the reference property. We have read the entire application and all the company material on the county website. Beside the vague promise of employing local people, we cannot feel a single thing in this application would benefit Madison County or any of the neighborhood citizens in that area. While we read the application, makes Graves Mountain Lodge seem small. Graves Mountain has for generations appealed to a wide range of citizens from Madison and neighboring counties. It does not appear that Chris Ray Rural Resort seeks to attract us at all, but folks from farther away areas with far more urban congestion than money. We live across from Liberty Mills Farm on a small gravel county road. This agritourism business was the result of an S U P that allowed a use not permitted by the government. Every Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, from mid-September until Thanksgiving, there is a constant and steady stream of cars for eight to 10 hours per day on my road. The traffic, the dust, and numerous people that get lost on our driveway are a fact of life for us. It is known that the county sheriff's office spends a lot of time there also. We seriously doubt that any of these tourists that live in Orange County anywhere would be their destination. This S U P is breathtaking in its scope. The 60,000 square feet of improvements, the potential for twelve large events per year, added to the unlimited small events, the sheer number of cars and people and the traffic on the historic and dangerous Turnpike seems enough to make Madison County hit the pause button, but the list goes on. As you are, all are aware, a special use permit like this at its, is at its core, is zoning. Those who buy or live on these own properties simply do not envision a large-scale rural resort as an ag use, creating a decision. Creates tremendous value for the property and where it's low expense. The neighbors are the ones who get the bill. Thank you for your service to Madison County, a special place that is under the order. Preserve its history and landscape than most, if not all, of its neighbors. Best wishes, Elizabeth and David. Mr. Hobbs, I'll turn it back over to you.
Mr. Hobbs, just a moment, please. Is anyone on the planning commission to take a short break? Okay. Creak up the mic, it might keep people awake a little bit. Thank you.
This next email was received June 29th. Looks like David Seagull. Dear Mr. Webb, this past weekend, I heard for the first time about the proposed Chris Ray Resort project on the border of Madison County and Orange County. As a resident, as a neighboring resident, I was shocked to hear of the scale of the proposed project and the rushed timeline for consideration and approval, particularly in the present COVID-19 atmosphere. I hope you agree with me that the proposed scope and scale of the project are immense, and the impact on the surrounding agricultural community is potentially extremely irreversible. There are numerous important factors for public officials to consider. Concluding the proposed, as a scale of the project, impact on existing infrastructure, including sewage, water, and roadways, noise, light pollution, radical change in the nature of the area, the quality of life of residents who have lived in the area for generations, and the bad precedent that would be set by approving such commercial development, ensuring land that for centuries has been centered on property zone for agricultural, for agriculture without a fair, fair public process. While it is difficult to think of a less appropriately used for such historically significant and naturally beautiful property, once approved, there is no turning back. There's only one opportunity to get this right. Important questions need to be asked about the principles behind the project. Financing, integrity of the process, there are rumors of public official involvement. Alternatives that would limit the adverse impact on the area and neighboring property values. Short, such a radical proposal deserves a full impaired hearing. We pull opportunity for input from all affected stakeholders, better public, public information about who is behind the project and why. It was described to me as a vanity project by someone who has publicly described it as a very, as a way to make a mark. A mark will clearly be made, a very ugly mark on a beautiful area. A project as impactful and significant as this is rushed through behind the scenes. No opportunity to public involvement. People are desperately concerned, something isn't right, and it creates another example of why people will hopefully justify with the stressful of government officials and process. Even local media are largely ignorant of the proposal. Speak for myself and numerous of my neighbors, some of who are unable to make their lives, their views timely known in the current environment, and strongly urging you to put the brakes on this process. To prevent the goal of improper disclosure of information, the opportunity for questions and answers, overall, of involvement. These difficult times, social isolation, and reduced opportunities for communication, it is inappropriate or good government policy to have such a radical proposal in a community that frankly does rarely look doubted, and shockingly shorted of this. Google ahead should prevail, and the timeline table should be altered so as to permit a public hearing on the merits of all interested parties having the opportunity to participate. These simply aren't normal times, and with the negative impacts this project would produce, it shouldn't be approved in the next five minutes. It puts the community in no reasonable opportunity to participate. A person will be hurt. Thank you for your consideration of the foregoing. I am able and available to speak to you further by telephone or respond via email. You can see right. Next is email received on June 29th from Ed Harvey, 1978, Jackson Town Road, Somerset. Although I don't live in Madison County, I live in Orange County, not too far from the proposed site. I, like many people, moved to the area for the real beauty and country, and kind of quiet. I'm horrified at the movement to take the agricultural land and turn it into venues that totally destroy the quiet, rural quiet and beauty. I live next door to a wedding venue, and I'm only here to destroy the quiet I moved here for. It's made my life, my quarter million dollar property, a lot less valuable. I ask the Planning Commission to not approve of this proposal, to keep Madison County beautiful, rural community, and get to the ex-plea amusement parks, etc. Sincerely, Ed Harvey. The next one is from Joanne Spighton, Scuffle Town Road, Somerset, received on June 29th. To the Planning Commission, to the Madison County Planning Commission and Madison County Board of Supervisors. A writing in regard to the S U P application for Chris Ray Resort. I do not live in Madison County, however, I've lived directly across the Rapid End River in the planned resort in Orange County. I went over this proposal yesterday and found, find out that it is being rushed through very quickly, which is not allowed too much time for citizens to be able to study the global, expressive concerns. First point, it's postponed decision until people can learn more about it. I'm not at all opposed to the concept of agritourism. I believe it is a good, it is a good concept, but done in a manner that retains the character of different ports. However, on the quick examination of the proposal, I have to take, because of the timing of the decision being rushed, this looks to be agritourism in name only. The size of the proposal exposes concerns about noise and light pollution, water and sewer concerns, contamination of the Rapid End River, large crowds, traffic, up to 1,000 people drinking, listening to loud music until midnight is not agritourism. True agritourism exposes people to their agricultural life, does not bring urban partying to peaceful setting, and call it agritourism just because it's wrong. As I said, I'm not against agritourism. I do not object to the developer creating something that is in character for the agricultural area, but this mega resort does not fit that definition. Joanne Spighton. Next is from Virginia Donaldson. Next is from Virginia Donaldson, 12384 Merritt Wood Drive, Somerset, received on June 30. Dear Mr. Webb, I am writing to express my concern about the Crestoray Agribusiness Resort. As a resident of Somerset, Orange County, my family and I will be negatively impacted by this huge resort in ways I'm sure have been expressed to you by my neighbors. Whether or not the resort is developed, also very concerned about the precedent this will set in future rural development. And so I'll go to many thanks sincerely, Jenny Donaldson. Next one is from Jenny Hill Robinson, no address given, received on June 30. Mr. Webb, Robert Miller's request for rapid end slash venue are unbelievable. Things are getting out of control and must, for the sake of everyone who has Madison County, be reined in. There are the neighbors and their livestock, the impact on the river, the traffic on our community roads. Please remember who is your person and why. Do not let this event slash venue damage everything that is still global about Madison County. Thank you, Jenny Robinson. The next one is email from David A. Dennis Scabell, received on June 30. Says, although I don't live in Madison County, I'm an Orange County, Orange resident, I do have serious concerns with granting an S U P for this project without a great deal of conditional consideration. All for tourism, but lean towards tourism that will only have positive effect on an old surrounding property owners. It's doubtful that this project will have nothing but a negative impact to those who will manage it. Please be careful, this could have a terrible effect on all of us. Thank you, David Scabell. Thank you for that. I deserve a round of applause. Next looks like an email from Brad Bennett, 833 Longshot Lane Rochelle, received on June 30. To the board, I'm a landowner on Longshot Lane in Rochelle, who would be directly impacted by this new resort. I'm writing to express my opposition to it in the strongest possible terms. Purchased our farm in Rochelle due to its rural character, quiet and charm. Having a major resort who runs around the corner completely overlaps with the agricultural zoning, it changed the nature and character of Rochelle forever. As Blue Ridge Turnpike is a natural cut through from 29 to Kenwall, our roads would be choked with resort traffic and their ears ringing from cars and now concert music. A decline in the quality of life in Rochelle is inevitable. While I am all in favor of sustainable economic development, I have lived for years in Northern Virginia and seen firsthand the disasters that occur when local governments buy into the false promises of developers. Unless you believe there is a ban on Madison residents for low wage, house planning, and service jobs, please do not be fooled into approving this proposal. Thank you, Brad Bennett. The next one is from Julie Picken, received on June 30. Good morning, I'm writing in regard to the proposed resort development on Rapidan River. I've wanted that you plan to go to a meeting on July 1 regarding this S U P. Given the scale of the proposed effort, that this S U P is only proposed this May, I would like to request that the meeting be postponed to July 28th at the earliest. It's fully on the county and surrounding areas adequate time to assess the proposal and respond appropriately. A resort of this size would have a significant impact on the county, pushing this request through without providing the residents time to fully understand the impacts to the agricultural area would be unfair and not serve the county's best interests. Thank you, Jenny Picken. This next one is from Christina William Rother, says, Bell One, Paul, received on June 30. Dear Supervisors and Commissioners, please distribute this email to Madison County Planning Commission and Madison County Board of Supervisors and include it in the public record. As residents of Madison County, we deserve to have a voice and a vote. Don't rush on deciding case number W-07-20-14. Please wait until all residents have been given proper notice and can be heard. The current proposal would be detrimental to our current environment and the beauty we enjoy in Madison County. Unlimited venues would not only cause uncontrollable traffic on Route 231, but also noise pollution. This must be reconsidered. Landowners and residents of Madison County live here to nurture the land and live in peace and beauty, continue your noise and music activities through midnight on any given day, or have the landscape tarnished. We are extremely concerned with the amount of noise and plans of having outdoor music being played until midnight. This is an unreasonable disruption to all residents. Madison County's own website can pull this quote. Madison County has been a grocery store since history for over 11,000 years. The Rio Indians, the rural governor, Alexander Spotswood, the Knights of the Golden Horse Sheen, is one of the Civil War generals Stonewall Jackson, Cheney, Stewart, along with their men, have all been visitors to Madison County. We are proud to invite you to this beautiful, historic and exciting region of Virginia. Why would you consider, why would consideration be given to tarnishing this beautiful historic land with a commercially zoned property in the middle of agricultural residential properties? You feel that this S U P, case number W-07-20-14, violates our rights as residents, how could this S U P be going to go? Proper notice being given to residents, S U P would do referee impact. Have the locals joining property owners been weirdly notified as a not legal public hearing sign stated at the entrance to Crestoray is being jammed through without even residents and landowners a voice? Will have an impact on Rapidan River, where there's light and noise pollution, negatively impacts the quality of life of Madison County residents. While we are two residents of Madison County, what appealed to us moving here was peacefulness, the air quality, the openness, and the amount of natural beauty we see and experience each day. We know what negative impact density of building has on the ecosystem for residents of all of us to save. Respectfully waiting to judicious and righteous decision. Christina William Rother, Bell One.
Correspondence received June 30, 2020. Hello, Madison County Planning Commission. It has come to my attention that a big resort-style development is being planned along the Rapidan River on the border of Madison and Orange Counties. I want to heartily express my disapproval for the development and believe it is totally out of character with the area. I have a farm in Orange County on the Rapidan, a bit downstream from the proposed development, and I am afraid the potential for serious pollution of various sources emanating from the development. Not to mention the increased traffic on roads that are largely rural of nature, I strongly urge you to deny the group plans for the resort. Respectfully, yours Peter Toos, Mary Dale Stables, Orange, Virginia. Next letter dated June 30, 2020. Mr. Webb, please include this email as part of the public record on the Crestoray Resort S U P and distribute this email to the members of the Madison County Planning Commission Board of Supervisors. Your supervisors and commissioners, my wife Amy Neal and I farm and live next door to the proposed Crestoray Resort LLC. We were surprised at the number of overnight guests and the number of annual public events it runs since the June 17 workshop. Overnight guest numbers grew from 100 to 225. Annual public events to 1,000 or more people grew from six to 12. These are two changes that need more discussion. Also, am I correct in reading that there can be amplified music seven days and nights a week until midnight? How much lighting will be needed to keep 1,000 more people safe until midnight? These were just a few of our concerns and questions. We ask you to table this decision so that new questions can be asked and answers can be worked out. Sincerely, Doug Hill. Next matter received June 30, 2020. As a farmer and landowner overlooking the proposed development, I am in total opposition to this project. It will bring light and sound pollution to a beautiful, peaceful part of Virginia. Look at the development as known to Charlottesville, Fredericksburg, and the rest of Virginia. This resort will just be the beginning with more to follow, as those landowners not in ease of interest to sell rather than live here. It will be very hard to turn down future special use permit requests in Madison County if this one is approved. People have been coming here from up north for years and making changes that only help the locals lose their great quality of life and history. Vote now in regards, David Bluthart, received June 30, 2020. I am in writing, writing in reference to the news and special use permits, 749 plus acre rural resort, provided by Christalas LLC located in South Leverage Turnpike. I reside on the property that borders the agricultural acreage that would likely be altered to a commercial development and has some concerns. I feel that the planning commission board supervisors may not be able to accept it with the name of this project until all voices are heard and all inquiries answered. I notice that this is being rushed through without adequate time for neighbors to analyze what is being proposed and potentially accepted. We need time to deliberate and eventually address the proposal. The impacts of such a large establishment will be felt throughout our rural community. We are a family that enjoys nature and the usage of our Rapidan River from spring through fall. Environmental impacts of such magnitude and potential devastation to our ecosystem, a lot of concerns about the utilization of this river. Rest assured, I am all for the concept of agritourism in Madison County, yet I feel that the size and magnitude of this proposal is not a true representation of the rural farm agricultural life. Noise issues are another area of concern. We love the quiet of Madison County hence living here. We also love the animal life who dwell here because of the peacefulness. I am concerned about the impacts of noise pollution and how it will affect all around us. Noise travels easily in the county and to be overwhelmed by the sound of concerts and varying events would interrupt what solitude we do have. Once again, it is the scale that is of concern. Our driveway lies at the bottom of the hill that is rather close to the Crestoray's driveway. It is already dangerous for us with the stream of traffic today, and the added traffic would induce loads of acquaintion. Please reschedule the public hearings so our voices and concerns can be acknowledged. Our questions answered in hopes that we can come to some resolution that may be more suited for the area. Also, who is this intended to serve? The affluent of the very socio-economic households of Madison County? I would hope that it is not out of the economic reach of our neighbors and intended to be an inclusive establishment. I love the idea of teaching communities the importance of sustainability and providing jobs to lives in our area, and for agritourism to be an essential part of helping a farm during difficult times and promoting the small businesses in our county. But is a mega resort what we need in order to do this? We, who reside in the area, need to weigh the pros and cons before coming to an inclusive decision. Bridget Ramo Joyce, South Leverage Turnpike, Rochelle, Virginia. Next letter received June 30, 2020. Ligon copy below is a note by Peter Rice to Clay Jackson, asking for the decision on the S U P. Be postponed so that all members of the committee can play in. I would like to echo Peter's request as a member of the committee that recommended the transient occupancy tax from Madison County. I am generally in favor of the order as it is a source of revenue for the county. But this is a large project that will set a precedent for future applications rushing through the middle of a pandemic without a separate public hearing from the planning commission seems particularly ill-advised. Please add my email to those addressing the issue. Thank you for your consideration, David Crowe, Virginia. Next letter from David from Peter Rice. Clay, I understand that the public hearing for this S U P is scheduled for July 1, only 45 days after the application is filed. What I have seen of the proposal raises a number of serious concerns about the impact of the plans for development. This rural resort for the citizens of the county, especially since this is the first application. For a rural resort designation, it seems that the process should be deliberate and not rushed with the planning commission and V O S. I respectfully appeal that the public hearing on this matter be postponed until at least the July 28 meeting. Sincerely, Peter G. Rice, 2784 Shelby Road, Madison County. See, next letter. I don't believe I've read this, if I have, please read it around. To the Madison County Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission, I am writing to respectfully urge the board to delay its public hearing and vote on the Crestoray Resort S U P until its meeting on July 28th at the earliest. I have two reasons for urging this delay. First, the applicant's proffer letter is dated June 26, 2020. The county planner's full report was response to the proffer letter is dated June 27, 2020. The public hearing and vote on the S U P is scheduled for tomorrow, July 1, 2020. This means that the public will have had only three or four days to study the application of the proffer, and the county planner's full report was response to the proffer. There has been a contracted timeline overall for consideration of this S U P, but it seems especially unreasonable to expect members of the public to respond to an S U P application in an informal and thoughtful way when critical documents have come available only three or four days before hearing and vote. My second reason for urging a delay in the supervisor's public hearing and vote is that the county planner has made significant criticisms of the proffer letter that have gone unanswered, referring to the proffer letter the county planner writes in his report. It is recommended that the submitted site plan be a proper condition, special use permit. Apparently, it appears to be inconsistency between the site, site plan, and submitted proffer letter, namely, the total number of lodging units and that build out the total number of potential overnight guests appears to be significantly higher than anticipated. However, it is believed that the conditions placed on the definition of what constitutes a public event, 1,000 more people, the annual allowable number of public events, 12 per year, noise, outdoor music cut off at midnight, lack specifics, and is ambiguous, as been written, for example, plan to adhere to page 27. In fact, the county planner suggests table in the S U P says that the issues he raises can be addressed. However, questions remain regarding the number of lodging units, annual number and definition of public events, and the event the county planner, the proper conditions related to these issues are vague and need improvement. If tabled with the applicant is agreeable, the county planner will work with the applicant to clarify these conditions to the satisfaction of all, page 29. The issues here are inordinate positions that the applicant and the county planner take on them differ significantly. For example, in this letter to the applicant on June 3, 2020, the county planner suggests limiting to two the number of public events that could be held at all is necessary to ask permission from the board of supervisors, page 33. The application sets that number at 12. If the county planner himself has written on June 27 that the S U P application needs to work, I do not see how there can be a public hearing and a vote on the S U P after July 1. I have many serious concerns about the Crestoray proposal, and if a vote were to be taken, I would hope that the S U P application would be denied. But for the purposes of this comment, I am limiting my remarks to the question of delaying the supervisor's public hearing and vote on the S U P until July 28th or later. I keep your attention and your service to Madison County. James Collins, Somerset. Next letter, I am writing today concerning the proposers around the Rapidan River, which is before the joint board of supervisors and planning commission meeting on July 1, 2020. I reside now sharing a farm in Orange County, so you may ask why I would concern myself with Madison County matters. My reasons are twofold. Number one, the land in question fronts on the Rapidan River, which separates it from Orange County. Number two, often planning exceptions and decisions regarding jurisdictions from precedents for jurisdictions and others, especially from counties. Madison and Orange County are known for their fertile land, majestic views, and agrarian lifestyle. Now and then, the owner of a beautiful parcel sells a family wedding or event posthumously for the benefit of a local charity on their land. It's quite another matitive, like encouraging a large woodstock-type gathering on one's land with the goal of making it a for-profit business. A large gathering creates more noise and light pollution, not to mention the extraordinary noise which disturbs not only immediate neighbors, but those who otherwise enjoy the peaceful and nuisance of their agricultural green space and live 90 miles away. In addition, this type of use will lower values of all joining agricultural land, including parcels across the river in Orange County. The glamping aspects of this proposal are merely another way of making profit by creating housing on a denser basis than allowed by present zoning. What does Madison County have to gain from this proposal? I would look at application for making disastrous exception for cheap development that most sensible person would want to or encourage. I encourage you to continue protecting our unbeautiful county and to do a good job on our county across the river by denying this damaging proposal. Sincerely, Charles H. Seidelheimer, owner. Received June 30, 2020. Dear Supervisors and Commissioners, please distribute this email to Madison County Planning Commission and Madison County Board of Supervisors and include it in the public record. As residents of Madison County, we deserve to have a voice and vote. Don't rush deciding on case number W-07-20-14. Please wait until all residents have been given proper notice and can be heard. The current proposal would be detrimental to our current environment and the beauty we all enjoy in Madison County. Unlimited venues would not only cause uncontrollable traffic on Route 231, but also noise pollution. This must be reconsidered. Landowners and residents of Madison County live here to nurture the land and believe in peace and beauty and not to hear music, and to hear noise and music venues through midnight on any given day or have the landscape tarnished. We are extremely concerned with the amount of noise and the plans to have outdoor music being played until midnight. This is an unreasonable disruption to all residents. From Madison County's own website, can pull this quote, and it is the same quote that we heard previously. We feel that this S U P, case number W-07-20-14... We feel that this S U P, case number W U dash zero seven dash two zero dash one four, violates our rights as residents. How could this S U P be going to go prior to proffer minutes being given to residents that this S U P directly impact? Have the locals and joining property owners been legally notified? There has not been a legal public hearing signed stating that the entrance to Crestorai is being jammed through without giving residents and landowners a voice. Will have an impact on the Rapidan River as well as light and noise pollution, negatively impacts the quality of life of Madison County residents, and I see now that this is a one that I have previously read in the record. So I will stop me, Mr. Webb, if you can pick up with the letter from Mr. Robinson.
I can keep going. Received June thirty. Dear Secretary of the Planning Commission, please pass along my letter to both the board of the, of the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors. I understand that you're having a joint meeting tomorrow, and I'm writing to express my concern about things, proposed development of land in Madison County along the Rapidan River. With the information I've gathered, this is a large-scale event centered that will contain restaurants, bars, and a huge outdoor venue, overnight accommodation. Project is of very large scale, and I'm concerned that there's not been enough time to review the impact on the community. We enjoy a secure and peaceful environment here in our rural county, something which is unique and rare, a rare commodity in this facet of the state. I believe that we should do everything to preserve the rural character of our community and have admired Madison County authorities, the planning commission, taking the time to listen to our citizens when it comes to all the changes. At this point, all I am asking is that you reschedule the public hearing to a later date so that your fellow residents here can voice their concerns in person. If you're unable to reschedule this, I would ask that you deny the special use permit in its current form, with concerns about its size, the proposed logic, the noise, and pollution generated from the increased traffic, not to mention sewage, water runoff to our elevated Rapidan River. In my opinion, the size proposed in interview is more of a commercial nature and does not belong in agricultureally is on the area. It should not be allowed without some very strong restrictions and limitations in place. Please let me know when I can attend a meeting in person to express my additional concerns. I'm counting on you to do the right thing by your neighbors, give us the appropriate opportunity to respond. Dr. Shirley Rachel Bear Nicole, Madison County, Minnesota. Received June thirty, twenty twenty. Dear members of the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, we're an astonishing proposal from Cristalas LLC related to the development of Kenmore One, seven hundred and forty-plus acre property which is sold for agriculture in Madison County. People who live in Rochelle want to be outraged that the special use permit was ever requested in the first place. We have all chosen to live on agriculturally zoned land because we love the peace and quiet of a rural setting, a place without undue traffic and noise, tranquil place for raising animals, crop, and animals. Scale of the proposal is immense and totally out of proportion for rural property on land designed for agriculture. The amount of traffic it would generate is also enormous and not consistent with the rural character of the property or the neighborhood. Where on earth the parent company thinks they're going to get out of thousands of people they are planning to accommodate is beyond me, but they are certain not all of them are out here. As a citizen, as a resident of Orange County, the idea of development of this scale around the forty of Orange and Madison Counties on agriculturally zoned land gives me the horrors as the next group of developers may try something similar in Orange County. Please turn down the proposal from Cristalas LLC, the special use permit. We displace a piece of agricultural land that is undefiled and unspoiled. If you are not able to flatly deny them, at least, at least table the public hearing process until the end of July, you will have time for public review and analysis by county residents regarding this piece of property. Sincerely yours, Flossie Farrell Fokes, Florence Bryant Fokes, Q. Box nine ten, ten two two six, Upper East Drive, Ordensville. The next letter was received on June thirty. With the attention of Madison County Planning Commission and Madison County Board of Supervisors, my name is Michelle Carter, and I live on Scoville Town Road across the Rapidan River on six and nine in Somerset, Orange County. I'm writing in regard to the S U P application for Crestorai Resort to express my concerns with haste, haste and quietness with which this proposal is being pushed through. This S U P relates to a course of skill change in our community, following complex interrelated topics of economic, social, and environmental. More transparency, equal participation by local residents and the surrounding communities in their backs, why so chaste, especially in a closed COVID-nineteen environment? I ask that the vote on this S U P be postponed from July one, twenty twenty, allow local and surrounding communities to better understand the origin aspects of this resort. Lack of transparency and speed and process, this S U P speaks volumes. My concerns for the community conclude how the following will be controlled: upper limits on daily attendance slash I D, increased traffic, noise level, trash, policing impact, water, light pollution, and overall infrastructure. We ask for approval from the, to the vote, or a vote or a note to the issues of this S U P as is, according to Michelle Carter. Next email received on June thirty, twenty twenty. Dear Mr. Webb, Planning Commission, and Madison County Board of Supervisors, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the reading of the special use permit in the Crestorai Rural Resort. Please include my comments as part of the public record and distribute to the members of the Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors. I'm a property owner in Rochelle, and I derive the reason of Madison County from Green County because I believe that Madison County values these farming traditions, rural way of life, and sought to keep development to a minimum. I believe this proposed development removes the large tract of viable farmland from its original intended agricultural use. This is a slippery slope whereby more large-scale commercial development enters its own way. The scope and size of this project dramatically alters the rural character of the county and jeopardize the proposed plan that seeks to significantly alter the usage of the land as well as impose significant burden on the county's infrastructure, police, fire, and rescue, and many other county services.
Question, not to interfere, but...
Excuse me, sorry. Here are some of my biggest concerns and objections to this proposal. This project is not received in kind of scrutiny necessary for the planning department in public to fully understand and document all the details associated with the special use permit size. An environmental impact study about independent environmental farm should be required with this and other large-scale development projects prior to an S U P being granted. I'm concerned about this development's negative impact on Rapidan River, endangered species, central berrysides, rural sites, or historic sites related on the property. Rapidan River serves an important role as a portable drinking water source for multiple counties downstream, including the town of Orange. Having lived on the Rapidan River for over twenty years, I can attest to the vulnerability of the river to the witness. Alternation between incessant flooding and drought needs to be protected as a resource. There is a great concern over the number of developments currently being constructed along the banks of Rapidan, Green Lightning LLC, any one for dead, pressured and expat of a resource that's destroyed the river's viability. The sheer scale of this project, known and not yet known, necessitates this S U P denied. The event center of eleven thousand pounds square feet, other structures that run down the...